Trustee Healy. Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the July 1st, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of July 1st, 2024.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Proclamation honoring Italian Imports as Orland Park's Business of the Month, July 2024.
So it is my great pleasure to do this every month, or every month or most months anyways. And tonight we'll be honoring Italian Imports as Orland Park's Business of the Month, whereas Italian Imports has been an important part of our community, providing exceptional products and services since its establishment 25 years ago. And when Maria Lina Lamorte was a child, her dream was to own and operate a grocery store. Lena's son Alex had the same dream, and in 1999, they opened Italian Imports. And Italian Imports has demonstrated a steadfast commitment to excellence, offering a wide variety of high-quality foods and goods that have enriched the culinary experiences of countless residents and visitors, from quick and tasty sandwiches to catering. The motto of Lena and her son Alex lived by, "He who sleeps doesn't catch fish," has served them and our community well. And the success of this family-owned business over the past 25 years is a testament to the dedication, hard work, and entrepreneurial spirit of its owners and employees. Their motivating factor is service to their customers. It's very important to the family that they provide the best quality food and goods, ensuring the longevity of their business for generations to come. Now, therefore, I, Keith Pico, the village president of the Village of Orland Park and the counties of Cook and Will, do hereby extend the gratitude of the entire community to Italian Imports for 25 years of service to the community and hereby proclaim Monday, July 15th, 2024, as Italian Imports Day in the Village of Orland Park. And I'll just add that it's businesses like these that makes Orland Park who it is. We all are familiar with all the chain restaurants and chain stores that are here, but it's really these, it's the small businesses that really make our community what it is. So congratulations for 25 years and on being Business of the Month.[175.73][175.73][applause]
I don't think so. Why not?
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
Are there any, we don't have any signed in, are there any citizens to speak on agenda-specific items today? Okay. Good.
Good. Sorry.
What's the agenda item?
The agenda item is Item O, the annexation of 14567-82nd Avenue.
Item O, okay.
So today, I just received notification that this annexation was taking place, and I'd like to just request, if I could request some time for myself to discuss with my council, just to see what really is happening. That's kind of where I'm at with this. I do apologize, I don't really have much. I was notified this a couple hours ago, actually informally by my neighbor. Hey. But, yes.
Okay, and can we get your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Doug Herzog, H-E-R-Z-O-G, and my address, my address is 14567-82nd Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments?
Other than, no. If you have anything for me, just for my knowledge, but no, I don't, I don't really have much else to say, other than I'd really would appreciate if I had some extra time to go over this, other than just today.
Okay.
Yeah, just so I can better ascertain what the situation is. I just, yeah, I would humbly very much appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on any non, or any agenda items?
Okay. Accounts payable, July 2nd, 2024 through July 15th, 2024, approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve the accounts payable, July 2nd, 2024 through July 15th, 2024, in the amount of $4,319,784.11.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for July 5th, 2024, approval. Item B, Orland Park Veterans Commission Queen of Hearts Raffle License. Item C, Orland Park Veterans Commission Taste of Orland Raffle License. Item D, desktop computer replacement purchase approval. Item E, ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 15, Class A and Class B Tobacco Licenses. Item F, special event permit for Orland Park Crossings, Edwards Realty Company-Customer Appreciation Day Summer Sidewalk Sale, 50 to 100 people. Item G, special event permit for AFT Local 943 Back-to-School Picnic, 100 people. Item H, special event permit for Orland Park Crossing, Edwards Realty Company-Spirit of America Car Show, 100 to 200 people. Item I, approval of the April 1st, 2024, and April 15th, 2024, executive session minutes. Item J, S.B. Friedman Development Advisors as Needed Consulting Services, 2024, Southwest Corner of 159th and La Grange. Item K, S.B. Friedman Development Advisors as Needed Consulting Services, 2024, 143rd and John Humphrey. Item L, S.B. Friedman Development Advisors as Needed Consulting Service, 2024, 153rd and the Railroad Tracks. Item M, Tyler Technologies, Inc., Computer-Aided Dispatch and Record System Annual Maintenance Fee Purchase. Item N, 7300 at 155th Street Annexation. Item O, 145551 to 14567-82nd Avenue Annexation. Item P, 760178 to 7811 West 143rd Street Annexation. Item Q, 7935 to 7945 West 143rd Street Annexation. I will entertain a motion to approve Items A through N and P and Q of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll. Mayor Pico.
You made the motion, right?
Trustee Compass made the motion, and Trustee Katsinas seconded.
Ah, good, thank you. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye, got it.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
So Item O.
Yep. Item O is 14555-14567-82nd Avenue Annexation.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Annexing Property 14555s through 14567-82nd Avenue, Surrounded, Unincorporated Territory.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
So given in light of the request here, I think the intent here would be to table?
Well, potentially, but what I want to know first from George is when were these notices sent out?
I think Attorney Walsh can kind of give an update on this. He did have communication with their attorney.
Yeah, I talked to, I talked to his attorney this afternoon, explained to him that although the owner of the property may not have received notice, and I don't know if he did or didn't, the requirement under the municipal code is for it to be published in the newspaper within 15 days before the hearing, which, or before the consideration of the annexation, which it was, and by certified mail to the vast taxpayer of record, and we have a certified mail, and that certified mail indicates that, in fact, that notice was received. So all the proper parties were given notice pursuant to the statute.
Is there, is there any, George, are there any reasons why this couldn't be table, why there's any reason why you can't table it till the next meeting?
We can definitely table it till the next meeting. There's no, nothing.
Or postpone to a date certain, I guess would be the better, the better response. So I'll entertain, well, does the board have any comments? I'll entertain a motion to postpone this to a date certain, being the next board meeting, which is August.
August 5th.
August 5th of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Are we voting on the item O?
Um, that's what we just postponed.
Right.
So there's no vote.
Right.
Right. Just continue to the next meeting, so now we're on item 10.
Lateral Police Officer Eligibility Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve the recommendation of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners regarding lateral police officer eligibility and to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Amendment of Chapter 3 of the Rules and Regulations of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners of the Village of Orland Park to add Section 12, entitled Lateral Eligibility List.
Second.
Are there any comments? I think this is a great idea and a long time coming. It's hard to recruit police officers, we know right now, and I think it's always great if we can get a high-quality police officer laterally to come to Orland Park, which we know they want to come here, and that's one of the reasons why we're full and we're fully staffed. I know the chief is supportive of this, so, so I think this is a great, a great addition to our procedures and also to the board above police and fire commissioners. Call the roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
2024 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation and Construction Oversight.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to accept the bid for the 2024 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project from Vizu Sewer of Peewaki, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $777,535.83, which is $706,850.75, plus a 10% contingency of $7,685.8, and accept the proposal from RJN Group Incorporated of Joliet, Illinois, for professional engineering 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation construction oversight services in an amount not to exceed $57,800, and authorize the village manager to execute all contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second. Are there any comments? Joel, is this a single area or is it going to be all throughout the village?
It's predominantly one area, but there's a lot of connections and so forth, and that's why.
So what, what area is it primarily?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me. About 5,675 linear feet of area, so.
Okay.
I'll get that to you.
All right. I just was curious.
Call the roll. Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Portillo's Hot Dogs LLC, 20 Orland Square Drive, new drive-through restaurant.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the Plan Commission recommend, recommended action for case number 2024-0116, also known as Portillo's Hot Dogs LLC.
Second. And do we have a presentation?
All right, this is Portillo's Hot Dogs, where the Denny's used to be, as shown on this slide. So they're seeking a special use permit for a new drive-through restaurant. It would be drive-through only and pickup. It wouldn't not be, there wouldn't be any dine-in as part of this development. And then three modifications are being requested as part of this development. One would be parking lot structures and drive-through facilities located within the setback between the building facade and the street, canopies extending more than three feet into the front, side, and rear setbacks, and number three, maintain no less than 65% transparent glass in the area measured from two foot six above the interior finished floor to eight feet above the interior finished floor along the elevations. Areas of transparency shall provide a minimum visibility of five feet into the interior during business hours.
So what, going back to that, so, number three, what is the amount?
So two of the, two of the facades won't meet that minimum requirement because it's kind of four-sided architecture, so to try and have like backup house for restaurants, they can't meet that on all four sides.
Right. Well, and also it's not a dine-in as well, right?
Correct. So this is the location kind of in the northwest corner of Orland Square Mall area. It's currently zoned, it's zoned and will be zoned, core zoning district, which is in the commercial land use. These are some renderings of the proposed drive-through. And parking requirements, one parking space is required for every 100 square feet of building area. In addition, seven stacking spaces are required per drive-through lane. The 38.
Is this a north-up direction?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so La Grange should be on our left.
On your left, yes. And then the Ring Road is to the right.
Yep.
The proposed, the proposal has 38 parking spaces, which meets the minimum number. I believe the minimum requirement is 37. There are 26 queue spaces between the two proposed drive aisle lanes, and four bicycle parking spaces are being provided. There is a short video, if you would like to see the operations of their drive-through.
Sure. I'm assuming there's a landscape buffer like we always require?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
All right. And also during the meeting, during their presentation, they also confirmed that they would do what's necessary to make improvements either to their operations, to make sure that none of the traffic back up into the Ring Road, which was the primary concern of the Plan Commission during the conversation. But overall, the commissioners and the public expressed support for this new proposal, for this new development. And then the Plan Commission recommended the village board provide, approve the findings of fact, site plan, and preliminary landscaping and engineering plan with the proposed modifications and building elevations, and they recommended unanimously per the staff recommended action at the meeting. And so the recommendation with the things not need to be read.[1211.45][1211.45][laughing]
Any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
First of all, this is fantastic. Anytime we can get somebody to come in and take over, you know, a restaurant that's, that's closed down, especially on La Grange, I'm a huge fan. My family's a huge fan of the restaurant, and so not having to go all the way over to Harlem is going to be fantastic. My concern was, and I think it was addressed here and you just mentioned at the end there, I think we have a couple of those situations where during very busy times, some of the drive-through restaurants have traffic that go into the, the street and causes some problems. Kane's comes to mind. My kids are very big fans of that as well. So I, it looked like it was addressed. I was satisfied with what I saw in there, but I'm glad that I saw the last slide, that was talked about, and, you know, the way it's going to shape, they're going to queue the line to stay on their, kind of on their property.
Yes.
Is that fair? Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? This is a great addition. I don't think people appreciate, and probably even the trustees may not fully appreciate the difficulty of developing this particular site. It's a, because of the MWRD stormwater changes since the mall, since Denny's have been built, there's new requirements, and basically we just don't have any more storage capacity over there, so pretty much everyone that constructs has to construct and have water storage on their site, which for a small site like this is very, very challenging. And so this becomes a great fit. It, one, gets rid of a horribly ugly old building and puts in a brand-new one, but I think something that's going to be highly utilized, much like Chick-fil-A, it's, you know, great economically for us. I have no problems with Orland Park residents using Orland Park Portillo's rather than the Tinley Park Portillo's, so all of that is great. So I think this is a great addition, and I'm glad they could make this site work because I think it's, it's, helps get rid of a problem, a problem parcel that would have been very difficult to otherwise develop, which would have meant an old building that kept, keeps crumbling, so, so this is great. Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
A resolution approving the local public agency agreement for federal participation to be entered into by the Village of Orland Park and the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, and for the appropriation of village funds for the purpose of paying for the local agency share related, related to the construction of the John Humphrey Drive at 143rd Street, roadway intersection improvements, and dry land bridge expansion project under IDOT project number F6GB348, state job number C9126124, section number 16-00078-00-CH.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
Ditto, I mean, I'd say the same thing. Just kidding, I'll read it. I move to adopt a resolution entitled, The Resolution Approving the Local Public Agency Agreement for Federal Participation to be entered into by the Village of Orland Park and the Illinois Department of Transportation, and for the appropriation of village funds for the purpose of paying for the local agency share related to the construction of the John Humphrey Drive at 143rd Street, roadway intersection improvements, and dry land bridge expansion project under IDOT project number F6GB, open print 348, state job number C-91-261-24, and section number 16-00078-00-CH.
Second.
I did it faster than you, Pat.[1436.37][1436.37][laughing]
So George and, and Keshid, this is just something we have to do in order to do the project, correct?
That's correct, mayor. We're basically committing that after the $3 million that we have in grant, the rest will be paid by the village. That's what this is all about.
And so people understand that we, we accepted a jurisdictional transfer some years ago to get 143rd Street widened from La Grange to Harlem, much like what we're asking for from Wolf to Wilcook. On non-numbered state route, we can do that, and part of that is we have to do the maintenance. Well, unfortunately, IDOT decided to do a new technique, new technique of land bridge develop, of building using styrofoam at 143rd and John Humphrey that has turned out to not work so well. Unfortunately, the village is on the hook for that. One of the things we will make sure, when we do get a jurisdictional transfer between Wilcook and Wolf, that they don't use any untested techniques on us, because we're ending up having to pay a significant amount of money for that. But that's what this is for, to fix that, because that land bridge is actually, is failing. Any other comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Sportsplex, Orland Park Health and Fitness Center, and Franklin Wilby Center, gym rentals, sportsplex soccer field rentals.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Radiszewski.
I move to approve increasing gym rental fees at the Sportsplex, Franklin Wilby Center, and the Orland Park Health and Fitness Center, and the Sportsplex Soccer Fields by $5 an hour for each resident participate, participation category except 49% and below, effective November 1st, 2024.
Any questions or comments? Okay, so my comments will be, these are small increases. If you look at all the things we compared it to, well, first off, we're not a park district. The Village of Orland Park, the parks are inside the village, which is, I think, a huge benefit for taxpayers, because park districts is another taxing body that taxes you through the nose. You look at Tinley Park and their village taxes, tax rates that are higher than the village, plus they have a park district, which also gets tacked on. So I think we're fortunate in that regard, and if you look at this, we're lower than all of these areas for soccer. Many of them don't even offer soccer options, and even for, for the gym rentals, I think the only ones I see here for the gym rental that's cheaper is Frankfurt is the only one that's less expensive. And I guess we would argue that Frankfurt Park District is, is not nearly as robust as our gyms and everything. I know because I've played on Frankfurt Park District ballfields. So, so I think, you know, we're keeping our stuff in line, or actually lower than everybody else, so I think this is very fair, and these are not huge increases. Any other comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Taste of Orland Park Tents Tables and Other Rental Equipment Addendum.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to approve an additional expense of $18,230 to add weights to secure tents for the 2024 Taste of Orland, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
And this is, Ray, this is all related to the, the lack of tie-downs for the tents, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So just so the board is aware and the public's aware, so we had to order special tie-downs, and we have to actually modify them in-house, and we don't even, and they've been back-ordered for, what, six months or more? And so we've only received some of them, because what we're going to do is we're going to drill holes into the asphalt, pour concrete, and have permanent tie-downs, so we don't have to rent these things in the future. So it was out of the budget because we thought we were going to be able to have that done. Unfortunately, because of supply backlog, it's not done. I guess the good news is, is that if we have any adjustments to make on the remaining tents, we won't have drilled the holes yet, so we'll be able to make adjustments and we'll learn from it this time, so there is some benefit to this. And so some of them will have tie-downs, but some of them will not. So make sure the ones we put tie-downs are the ones we're absolutely certain are going to go where they're going to go. That's my only request. Any other comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
Anybody here to speak on anything else?
Board comments.
Board comments. Trustee Reardon.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to Italian Imports. I'm a big fan. I go there for, I do a tailgate every year for a Bears game with clients and family, and I get, you know, three of your largest subs every time, and they're fantastic. People rave about it. People come from all over that aren't from the area, and they are always asking me where they got it and stuff, so. And I love, my mom is 100% Italian, she was, she passed away, but she, we'd come in there when she would visit, and the authentic Italian stuff that she would have, and they just brought her back to her childhood, so it's a great place. Congratulations, well-deserved. Hope everybody enjoyed the concert on Saturday night? Hope everybody enjoyed the concert on Saturday night. I was not able to go, but I lived close enough that I could hear it, and I'm of the age that I remember Pat Benatar, and I was trying to discuss with my 12-year-old and my 14-year-old daughter some of the songs. I was putting them, you could barely hear it, but you, but I put it on Spotify to listen to some of the songs she was playing, and they absolutely loved it. I thought it was fantastic. I've seen some comments here and there about, you know, some of the, the routing, we're going to get it fixed. It's, we're going through it, you know, for the first time. It's a fantastic venue. We'll keep learning from, you know, our events out there and just keep getting better all the time. So I have no doubt that we'll fix some of those little tiny things. Got some serious weather coming in tonight, so be careful out there. Thanks.
So, so Italian mother, Irish father, so mixed marriage?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Although they, they liked him, you know, more than like their other kids, though, so...
Trustee Radiszewski.
I too want to say congratulations to Italian Imports. Small business is big business. It's, you know, what helps keep the economy going. And you know what? I mean, to be able to do what you love for 25 years is just great. So congrats. We're happy that you're, you're here and that you're thriving. And also want to say thank you to Ray and your entire team. I was at the concert, and it was, it was great, very well-done. And I know there was a lot of work that went into it, and to reiterate what Brian just said regarding the weather, we are supposed to get some bad storms coming through, so if you don't have to be out in it, stay put. That's it. Good night.
Trustee Compass.
So good evening, and congratulations to Italian Imports. It's always great to see the family come out and, and celebrate together. So thank you all for coming out. As we conclude tonight's meeting, I do want to reflect on some significant events that our community experienced this past weekend. We faced challenges in managing larger crowds in a security-minded world, but ultimately enjoyed a outstanding performance by Pat Benatar. She was just phenomenal. We were also confronted with the very sobering news of an attempted assassination of a former president just moments prior to that concert starting. And then lastly, yesterday morning, I had the privilege of witnessing the Illinois COPS Cycle Across Illinois event. All these experiences collectively this weekend reminded me of the diverse challenges and triumphs that our community and nation face together. As for the assassination attempt, I'm not going to linger too long on this. It's, it's a national matter far beyond our scope, except to say that it is disheartening to observe the escalating hyperbole and vitriol in American politics, even after such an event. People on opposing sides of the political spectrum carelessly amplify their rhetoric with terms like dictator, tyrant, and death to democracy, often without considering the real-world consequences, or worse, wishing for them. Such language not only polarizes us further, but it also incites actions and threatens the very foundation of our nation's principles. And I wish I could say that that was something that only happened in, in Washington, DC or elsewhere, but here in Orland Park, we are not immune to this trend. Some here have referred to Mayor Pico as a dictator, tyrant, or repeatedly compared him to President Trump, all while accusing him of seeking to control the village despite evidence in how the village truly operates. These accusations, often propagated through coordinated robocalls, editorials, social media ads, anonymous packages left at his home, mailers with false addresses accusing him of crimes, extortion letters sent to his wife at her work, many frivolous lawsuits, and diatribe complaints filed with just about every alphabet agency that you can think of, including all the way up to Supreme Court Justice Roberts. They all seek to create a toxic environment that undermines our collective efforts to serve our community effectively. And even if you disagree with Mayor Pico, I ask that residents consider if they could withstand a fraction of the regular exaggerated attacks that he receives and persevere to bring about the great things that he has with us for our village. I'm not going to call out those that perpetrate these claims or ask them to stop. I know that such requests would be made in vain. They're not going to listen to me. Instead, I ask our community to see these attempts for the self-interested exaggerations that they are and question the motivations behind such rhetoric, especially in light of what we have seen at a national level. With today's technology, speed often outweighs thoughtfulness, and bias overshadows objectivity. We must critically evaluate the information we receive and strive to foster a culture of respect and civility in all of our interactions. In both closing and contrast to the negativity, I do want to end on a high note. I had the opportunity to observe the Cycle Across Illinois event on the day that it traveled from Lewis University in Romeoville to Michigan Avenue in the city. This event, while, which included many participants, such as officers from our own Orland Park Police Department, refocused for me in a profound fashion how my day-to-day concerns are small in comparison. Seeing the families of fallen officers gather in dedication was a humbling experience. As much as long lines at concerts can irritate me, they pale in comparison to the sacrifices made by these families. I'd like to acknowledge and commend the OPPD officers who participated in the ride, Officer Gonzalo Morales, father-son pair of Officer Tim Murray and Officer Pat Murray, and Commander Rosinski. Additionally, I'd also like to recognize those who supported the event, including Rich Miller and our therapy dog, Leo, as well as all those who helped repair the department building as a refreshment point for the riders. While it was a tragedy that brought these riders together, there was clearly a, a ton of love and camaraderie on display. And it's a safe bet that not all involved shared the same political views, yet they did this, and it did not matter in the slightest, as they rode together united. It was a great morning, and I'll remember that when more news about the assassination attempt comes out. My faith remains that our community knows how to stand together when it must. Thank you.
Trustee Malani.
Going back a couple weeks, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out for our first Independence Day celebration at Centennial Park West. It was really nice to see everybody come out for the event, enjoy themselves, and, you know, really, really test the waters to see what we could do out there in Centennial Park West. And by testing the waters, we tried it again with the Pat Benatar concert, and while we had some difficulties, we learned from mistakes, and we learned from things that necessarily don't go the way we want them to right away. But everybody had a great time once they got in the door. You know, based on the videos and based on the pictures I've seen, I was unfortunately a little bit farther south and wasn't able to attend, but looks like everybody had a great time. So we appreciate everybody coming out despite the weather and appreciate everybody staying for the event. And just a reminder that, speaking of events, we also have our Taste of Orland coming September. Wow, I'm doing really well today. August 2nd through the 4th, so we look to see you there as well. So, thank you.
Trustee Katsinas.
I too would like to say congratulations to Italian Imports. Remember your first store in the plaza? So you've grown a lot, and your selection has increased, and I'm sure your customer base has as well. So very happy you're here in Orland Park. Also, I'd like to welcome Portillo's. A lot of us, our waistlines are probably not going to like it, but it's, it's a wonderful... If anyone knows how to do drive-throughs, I think it's Portillo's. I mean, they have got that practice down. You see the line in Tinley, and it matter five minutes, it seems that you're out of there. So I have no doubt that they will increase whatever they have to do internally to make sure that Chief Rossi doesn't have to go there. On another note, I would like to thank Ray and staff for an outstanding job they did at the concert, Pat Benatar, under some really trying circumstances. Sure, the mayor might go into them in a little more detail, but Trustee Compass and I were at the front door, trying to assist in any way we could, and for every negative person, there was probably 100 people that were happy to be there. You know, sometimes we like to focus in life on the negativity instead of the positive. So people were there with a smile on their face, and what a huge crowd cheering. I mean, what a wonderful thing to, you know, uplift everyone emotionally in the community. It was really, really a wonderful event. So thank you so much for helping put that on. Just a reminder, too, we still have Markets in the Park going on on Thursdays, and one of our favorite entertainers, Big Dog Mercer, I think is going to be there this Thursday. So it's open Thursdays, 4 to 8. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And so Trustee Healy's not here tonight, and I don't even think most of the board knows, but our condolences go out to him. His brother passed away last night, so that's why he's not here today. Thank you, Trustee Compass, for your kind words. Also, I want to thank everyone for coming out for Independence Day, which was absolutely incredible, how many, how many people were there, both in the venue and then also outside the venue as well. So it was just a fantastic event, and, you know, I know we heard a few complaints about fireworks and then the like. Again, first time we were at that location, as far as the sightlines and all that, so we know we've got to, we've got to put them up higher, which is doable. So it's an easy, it's, it's, again, a fixable problem. So these are the things we're going to learn when we're first, first year and first time through some of these things. I'm sure we're going to learn some things from the Taste as well when we're there. And that brings me to the concert. I really want to thank staff for everything they did to make it a great event under some trying, some circumstances, which I'll lay out here. And thank you to everyone who came out to the concert Saturday night. You know, we've heard that no one's coming to the concerts. Well, I don't think that's the case. In fact, then those same people were saying, oh, we can't handle the lines. It's like, well, which one is it? But it was an incredible crowd, and Pat Benatar and Neil Giraldo were both fantastic, and they were very nice to me and my wife. They wanted to, they had us back, wanted to meet us, and they were very, very nice with their time. So thank, I really want to thank them. And she still sounds the same as she did 40 years ago, which is absolutely amazing. It just speaks to how much talent, you know, some people have. I also want to thank everyone for their patience waiting to get in the venue. There are a lot of things that contributed to those difficulties. We had a thunderstorm that delayed the gate opening for 40 minutes. And then also, you know, everyone, so everyone came at once, and everyone came at once because of the rain. Many people said they waited till after the rain to even drive there. So everyone's coming at one time, and in some cases, they were watching the news based on the event that happened, plus the fact that we started at 7:00 PM versus our normal 4:30, so we didn't really have a few hours and a couple of warm-up acts to get people in. And that was due to the contract with Pat Benatar, so it's not something that we chose. We, to be blunt, we just haven't never witnessed or anticipated that many people trying to come through the gates in such a short period of time. But this is kind of a worst-case scenario, so now we've learned from it, and now we'll be prepared for worst-case scenarios in the future. So, you know, so I'm very sorry for the inconvenience people had, but I do really, again, want to thank staff for making adjustments on the fly, and for Trustees Katsinas and Compass for jumping in to help and getting everyone in the gate. I think by the time the concert started or during the first song, I know I was helping down at the other gate, and everyone got in. So I also want to thank Pat and Neil for agreeing to delay the concert for about 10 minutes so we could get everyone in, and for still playing their entire show, which was absolutely awesome. The good news is the venue handled the crowd easily, and I know people will say, oh, it was really crowded, and it was. But I'm telling you, there were so many little spaces. I've seen a Taste of Orland here, which is three times smaller than, than the lawn that, that we have there, and people sit very close together. Well, that wasn't the case. They were, you know, everyone was comfortable, they had their tables out and all of that, which we can talk about at a later time. But it was, so it handled it easily. And in past years, a rain like that would have resulted in a cancellation. We've seen it. We saw it with Scott Stapp. We had no problems with drainage. Everything was fine. People could sit, no problems whatsoever with all the rain that we had. So the, so the venue has, has been built right. So, so that was great. The other good news is that all the issues we had are really easily solvable. In fact, I think we had most of the solutions before the night even ended. And so we've already made changes to our future plans to assure that we can handle these unforeseen circumstances such as these in the future. The main issues, of course, were the wait to get in and porta-potties, is what we've heard. We will be ordering more porta-potties. I will mention, though, that the line was shorter than any concert you've ever been to as far as getting in and out of the porta-potties. So I guess we're just a little spoiled here in Orland Park, but at the end of the day, it's easy to get more porta-potties and, and put them in, so we will. We will also have more metal detectors at entry points, so we have a few more lines, and we'll make some changes about how the lines are handled. A reminder, too, to people, this was just our second concert at the new venue, and we had an amazing and nearly overwhelming crowd already on a night that had a thunderstorm. We had a shorter entry timeframe and everything, and we still got everybody in to enjoy the concert. We'll learn from this one, we'll make the next one better, but I know that everyone that was there had a great time, and that's what's really important. I will also note that attendance that we've observed at the Market in the Park in the last two weeks is over double anything we ever saw at the other location. So this location is doing exactly what we want. More people are coming out, and more people are enjoying it. I really look forward to the Taste of Orland. I suspect we're going to break records for how many people we've, we have at Taste of Orland. A reminder to people, the Metro Park West Lot is for vendors, staff, ADA, and paid parking. So, and we've heard a lot about this. Oh, the parking used to be free. Well, first off, we had 200 spots is all we had, but the Metro, the Metro East Parking Lot and the remainder of Centennial Park are free. And I will note that there were over 2,000 spaces on the east side of the tracks, which is almost 10 times what's available here at the Village Center. So if you're going to complain about, we had better parking here, you're absolutely 100% wrong. People parked all the way down by the, at the police station, at the library, at businesses, that's where they parked. There's actually parking here at the park. Additionally, if overflow is needed, the owners of the Andrew Corporation site, JD Real Estate, are allowing us to use that lot, so thank you to them, which will have shuttle buses to and from that lot. That lot will only be used if it's needed, I suspect, on Friday and Saturday night and Sunday night, it likely will be. ADA drop-off remains near the stage, and ADA parking, as noted, is available in the West Metro Parking Lot for free. If you don't know where the West Metro Parking Lot, it's west of the tracks, west of the metro station, right near the water tower. So, and lastly, our final concert is on August 17th, featuring Mark Martel, and he did all the singing in Bohemian Rhapsody, and his Queen Experience is a phenomenal show, and we know that personally firsthand from our show two years ago. And I would say up until this year, that was the best show we've seen. This year, you can tell when you have national, international acts like Gary Levox and Pat Benatar, they, they were just phenomenal. But he will also be great. Additionally, a, a national touring Billy Joel and Brings cover band and a Bruce Springsteen cover band will be performing as well. So these are not like local cover bands that cover Billy Joel. These are like national acts. So this is going to be a fantastic concert, and the concert start is earlier. It's at 4:30. Also, another big issue that's been coming up with people is property taxes. We've been, we've gotten a few phone calls in the mayor's office, and what really hacks me off is that the county assessor is, the assessor's office is blaming municipalities. Well, let me tell you, the Village of Orland Park is 5.6% of your property tax bill. Used to be 7% when I took office, or about 7%. It's down to 5.6. We actually lowered our tax levy by 3.44%. Only, I think it was District 140 also lowered their tax. It was either 140 or 146 lowered theirs, 3/4%. Everybody else was north of 4% increase. But my tax bill went up 31%. Shaun, Trustee Compass went up 41%, Cindy's 21%, I think. Mike Malani's went up about, Trustee Malani's went up about 15% or so. Everybody's property tax here on this board went up. And so we're asking the question, how does your property... And my village portion went up 19%. How does my village portion of property tax go up 19% when we lowered our levy by 3.44%? Well, this is how. The county assessor shifted all of the burden to South and Southwest suburbs, number one, and then within the South and Southwest suburbs, all to homeowners. Basically, homeowners went up, every other category went down. Industrial went up 1%. Homeowners went up about 16%. Commercial went down 12%. Multifamily homes went down 7.5%. Multifamily homes went down 7.5%. They shifted the burden, they shifted 55% of Cook County tax burden, the new tax burden, went to South suburban and Southwest suburban homeowners. So I have a video that I've done on it. I won't go into any more detail than that, but there's a video, it'll be coming out, what, in the next day or two, I believe, you'll see that. And it has all the data and all the information and it lays all of this out. So, but just to be clear, that's, there's one person who's culpable for all this and that's the Cook County Assessor. Period, dot, end of story. I would also be remiss, I'm sorry for the long comments tonight, but if I didn't comment on the assassination attempt from Saturday. The poor Comparatore who was killed because he attended a political rally, which should never happen. Also, thank you to the U.S. Secret Service and local law enforcement on the ground for their quick response that kept this from being much worse. We live in an unsettling, but I will tell you, not unprecedented time of political divisiveness. This isn't the first time we've been this divided. And trust me when I tell you that nobody is more aware of this than our trustees and myself. I am hopeful that everyone can agree that violence in our political process is particularly abhorrent. The process should be about the discussion of ideas, not the destruction of people's families or violence against those with whom we disagree. Finally, I know that everyone on this board has focused on discussing facts in the face of many personal attacks on themselves and in some cases their families. I will remind everyone that since last year, I have identified that you can expect that the personal baseless made-up attacks to continue from those people who crave power at any expense. Unfortunately, I've been proven correct and these anonymous attacks continue even today with fake and nameless social media accounts that even showed up, there were more of them today. But I will also remind everyone that everyone in Orland Park has ample opportunities to ask me questions at many different events that I attend and answer questions, including we have a breakfast at the mall on the 24th at 9:00 AM. So you can come there and I answer questions for, usually it takes about an hour and a half for people to run out of questions. Just, and I also want to point out all the good things, or some of the good things in Orland Park. Just tonight, Italia Imports, a great Orland Park business, was honored as our business of the month. We also approved the Portillo's drive-through at the old Denny's site and we approved TIF studies for a developer interested in developing the old Andrew's site, the PD's 2 site, and the old Terry's Lincoln Mercury site. I don't think there's another suburb in Chicagoland with this level of activity, which I think speaks to the volumes of what a great place Orland Park is, and it's a great place to live, work, and play. On top of this, think about all the road improvements, park improvements, and the over 600 new businesses that have shown up in the last six years. Most recently, Shushla Park was redeveloped and Centennial Park was built. Those are both, as we know, amazing venues. And coming soon is the Police Training Center, as well as a new athletic maintenance garage and a new Veterans Center. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of our staff, but particularly our amazing